Getting to order, welcome to the September 21st meeting of the Temple Terrace City Council. If you would, please stand and join me for the... microphone is on, Jen. Lord, we ask your blessings upon our meeting tonight. Open our minds to wisdom and our hearts to compassion. We thank you for our amazing community and our great nation. We ask your help in healing the divisions that exist among us and to remind us that it is in our diversity that we are strong. Let this council be an example to others of how people with different opinions can work together in mutual trust towards the common good. We pray especially tonight for those who are struggling in our community and across the world. Grant them comfort, peace, and healing. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome again to the meeting. It's good to see all of you. Would remind everybody, including us, to make sure your electronic devices are silenced. The first item, I'm told that the presenter has not yet arrived. Does that... clerk, do you know?
Oh, boy, talk about timing. Walks in the door. She knows how to make an entrance.
We were just about to call you up. Hello, we have a presentation about the Amazing Art Race in Temple Terrace.
All right, well, let me just get enough water off my glasses so I can see.
Well, good evening.
Yes.
Want me to have that come up first?
What?
Want me to have that come up first?
You can play the video first and that will help because I still can't see.
All right, Brian, whenever you're ready.
Go, go!
On your mark, get set, go!
Ready, set, go!
Created by the New Tampa Players, the Amazing Arts Challenge brings together art organizations all over Tampa to raise awareness for the diverse art scene our region has. Instead of racing around the world, our teams race around Tampa to local arts organizations and compete in arts-related challenges. During the pilot season of the Amazing Arts Challenge, over 15 arts organizations participated by hosting challenges.
Good evening.
Thank you. I am so sorry I'm late. I hit this storm in New Tampa and then I hit it again.
So, welcome.
Thank you. So hopefully we have no more issues. My name is Nora Payne and I'm the producing artistic director of New Tampa Players. We are a community theater that's now located in Uptown at the University Mall. We just opened a new black box theater there. And last year during COVID, we did this project called the Amazing Arts Challenge. And what it is, is basically like the Amazing Race on CBS, except we are racing in Tampa and in Hillsborough County. From arts organization to arts organization, highlighting what those arts organizations are doing in our community and also highlighting the areas that they're in. We have five two-person teams that race. And when they get to an arts organization, they do a challenge, usually related to what the arts organization does. So last year, when we did Arts for All Florida, did a painting that they had to like copy. You know, and they went to Power Stories Theater in downtown, they did a skit. And the artistic director of Power Stories judged the skit. So, you know, if there was something that she felt was not quite right, she would tell them and send them back and tell them to do it again. So we raced last year, we raced in Ebor City, Seminole Heights, and also downtown Tampa. This year for season two, we want to race in Uptown and in Temple Terrace to highlight the Temple Terrace Arts Festival and also race in Carrollwood. And then we would be highlighting the Temple Terrace Arts Festival in the second week of November. It's a really good program. It runs on our social media and through our YouTube channel. We film on a Saturday, so our teams would be out on a Saturday filming in Temple Terrace. And each team has what I call a cellphone cameraographer with them, which is just a regular person who runs the race with them and catches all of those fun moments when they get lost or when they get into a slight little argument or something along those lines. We also have three professional photographers, videographers, that film things like the starting line in each activity and the finish line. And then we edit the video throughout the week and it's released on the following Thursday. So we really hope that Temple Terrace will participate because we are really looking forward to showcasing what is here in Temple Terrace.
Very good, thank you. And so how would we participate?
It's all lined up. It's happening.
So we got in contact with the Temple Terrace Arts Council and we already got plans in motion. And we appreciate everybody's cooperation and support.
Okay, very good. Well, I'm sure our colleagues will let us know what...
Well, you've been invited to be the... he's going to say go.
He is? Awesome, you're our special guest. That's wonderful.
Very good.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Nora.
Thank you. Thanks for coming tonight. Appreciate you driving in the weather.
You're welcome. I'm sorry I was a couple of minutes late.
That's all right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Drive carefully.
Next item on the agenda is an appointment to the library board. Here we go. There's one vacancy on the library board for a term extending from September 21, 2021 until September 21, 2024. The city received three applications from Carol Dell, Thea Mann, and Roxanne Bunton. Carol Dell's term expired. She is eligible to be reappointed. Each council member has a ballot. Well, prior to that though, I think, I know some of them are here, so... Okay, Mrs. Dell. Are the other two applicants here? No, okay, just Mrs. Dell. Good evening, ma'am.
Carol Dell, River Hills Drive, Temple Terrace. The good thing or the bad thing about the library board is you can be on there forever. There are no term limits. Which doesn't mean I want to be on there forever, but I would like to be considered for reappointment to the library board. I love the library. I love what it does for Temple Terrace. I love what Teresa does with the library. I love Ms. Susan, the cutest picture of Ms. Susan today on Facebook with her hair in rollers and in a bathrobe for story time for the little children. I think that the library just does so much for our community and I really enjoy being on the library board. And I would like you to consider my reappointment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Dell. Ladies and gentlemen, each council member has a ballot to vote for their top applicant for service on the library board. If each of you would please complete your ballot and pass it down to our left. The clerk will tabulate the results. I would like to say to all three applicants that we certainly appreciate your willingness to serve the community. And unfortunately, we only have one seat tonight on this board, on this particular board. But we are very appreciative for your willingness to serve the community. And we have plenty of recurring opportunities for everybody who's willing to get involved to be involved. And so we encourage you to stay at it and we would love to have you serving in some capacity.
So we have four votes for Carol Dell and one vote for Thea Mann from Councilmember April.
Very good. Is there a motion to approve the appointment of Carol Dell as a member of the library board?
So moved.
Okay.
Motion in a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? If none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no nays. Mrs. Dell, you are appointed for another term. Thank you for your service. And to the other applicants, Ms. Mann and Mrs. Bunton, thank you also for your willingness to serve. Has anybody, everybody had an opportunity to review the minutes from the September 7th council meeting? If so, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Is there any corrections to the minutes? If not, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no nays. Minutes are approved. Next are persons wishing to be heard on items not listed on the agenda or items on the consent agenda. Three-minute time limit will be imposed on all comments from the public. We do ask that speakers come to the podium, state their name and city of residence. And we'd like to ensure the public that all your comments are taken seriously by us, by the city manager, the city staff that are here, and we do follow up on issues that are of importance to you. So I see Mrs. Tumblson approaching. I don't currently have any other requests to speak, so Mrs. Tumblson, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Good evening.
As you know, we are in an amazing city. I cannot phrase the departments, all the departments in the city. Friday, a friend of mine was looking for property on the river and code enforcement was able to help. And I appreciate all their stuff they did. Thank you. Okay, now, Hillsborough County is locating, relocating the county commissioner district borders. District 3, which includes Temple Terrace, has an open house tomorrow night at All People's Circle, which is located at 6105 East Sly Avenue. That is like four blocks from 56 and Sly. Okay, it is September 22nd, which is tomorrow, at 6:00 PM. I look forward to seeing y'all all there. Thank you. Okay, I would like, okay, we're discussing tonight pennies for gas, pennies for potholes. Okay, I would like an update on the gasoline taxes that have already been collected. You know, we don't get a lot of information about that. So if anybody has any information, it would be nice if we could have a presentation or some comments tonight. Thank you very much. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Tumblson, for bringing that event to our attention. Are there other members of the public who wish to address the council on items not listed on the agenda? Going once, going twice, okay. Next is the consent agenda. City manager will explain.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've got one item on consent agenda this evening, which is a resolution to approve the purchase of two 2022 Ford F-250 trucks under Florida Sheriff's Association contract, FSSA 20-VEH18.0 from Duval Ford in the amount of $94,570 for our Public Works Utilities Department. Payment for these vehicles, one, payment for one of the vehicles of $48,985 will be from account 001-1715-541.64-12. Payment for the other, the other vehicle of $45,585 will be from account 410-1931-535.64-12. The current physical budget here includes funding for the purchase of these two vehicle replacements. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve.
Motion by Councilmember Chambers.
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Donahue. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no nays. Consent agenda is approved. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing and first reading of ordinance 1514, approving comprehensive plan amendment CPA 2102, property rights element. We'll open the public hearing. Mr. Mark Hudson, executive planner from the Hillsborough County City Planning, City/County Planning Commission will explain. Welcome, Mr. Hudson. It's always a pleasure to see you.
Thank you, Mark Hudson, Planning Commission staff. Great to be here this evening. Our staff has been working for a couple of months now to develop a property rights element for the city of Temple Terrace as well as the other jurisdictions in Hillsborough County. If I could have the PowerPoint, please. Thank you. This plan amendment has been assigned the number TTCPA 20-02. Just by way of a little bit of background, the property rights element that we are developing for you is required by a recently adopted piece of legislation called House Bill 59. It was signed by Governor DeSantis at the end of June. It requires property rights elements to be developed for all the jurisdictions in the state of Florida, including the four here in Hillsborough County. The primary reason for this state legislation is to ensure that private property rights are protected within Florida and across the state. There are imposed penalties if the jurisdictions don't comply with this. And that is related to the processing of other plan amendments by the jurisdiction. Those that were initiated after July 1st of this year, theoretically, their implementation and adoption schedule would be impacted until such time as the jurisdiction adopted a private property rights element. Currently, there are no, based on our timeline that we've established for Temple Terrace, we don't believe that there'll be any plan amendments that will be unduly impacted by this action. So these are the goals. The plan amendment is rather slender, I'll describe. It is a single goal, objective, and policy. And the language that we utilized was verbatim out of the legislation. We did have counsel with the Department of Economic Opportunity and their counsel to us was, at least in this initial phase, to stick very directly to the legislation. There's always opportunities to make additional improvements at a later date. So we stuck very directly to that language. The single goal is acknowledge private property rights to ensure their consideration in the local decision-making processes of the city of Temple Terrace. And the objective is to respect private property rights in the city of Temple Terrace. And this is the single policy. I won't read through that, but I'll leave it up on the screen for a few moments. This is the language that comes out verbatim from the legislation. In our review and also with our counsel, with all, not only your city attorney, but the legal staffs of the other three jurisdictions, we actually believe the impact of this language is limited. Most of these aspects, the jurisdiction, Temple Terrace and the others in Hillsborough County already are very mindful of protecting private property rights. We also go out of our way to go above and beyond what is required as far as noticing of hearings such as this. So we feel that this obviously identifies it and addresses it within your comprehensive plan. But many of these issues were already addressed in your plan amendment procedures manual and your land development code. We did take this element to the Planning Commission on August 24th, not only with the one for Temple Terrace, but the other three jurisdictions as well. They found all four consistent with each jurisdiction's comprehensive plan. In your case, the Imagine 2040 Temple Terrace comprehensive plan. We are scheduled here for you to consider transmittal to the Department of Economic Opportunity. We did have them review this unofficially, but there's a requirement for them to officially review this to find it in compliance with the legislation. And we hope to accomplish that this evening. And of course, we're hoping for a quick turnaround and have this back before you for your final consideration on October 19th. And if we're able to maintain that schedule and no other plan amendments that are currently in the pipeline for Temple Terrace would be adversely impacted. We did review this one in particular with your Imagine 2040 Temple Terrace comprehensive plan. And being new to subject matter, it's a little bit different, difficult and different to make a consistency finding. But really what we wanted to demonstrate was that of your overarching goals, particularly the eight goals that are in your future land use element. And you can see the topics there on the screen, dealing with neighborhood conservation and community development, complete streets and the like. We felt that this element and the policies in particular will not adversely impact your goals of completing that overall vision. We do believe it complies with the intent of the legislation that was signed by Governor DeSantis. And we did send this out far and wide for internal review of your staff and also for other agencies. And we received no negative feedback. With that, Planning Commission staff recommends that you adopt a resolution this evening directing staff to transmit TTCPA 21-02 to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity and other state and local agencies for their review and comment as required by chapter 163. Mayor, that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions. I also want to note that your staff, and particularly your planning staff, is also here to address the process of how this action should be taken as far as the adoption of the resolution.
Good, thank you, Mr. Hudson.
Dustin, your planet. So what you have here is actually two public hearings. First, this presentation was about the transmittal, but it also included the ordinance 15-14, which outlines the actual amendment, the text amendment, and has the language within there. So the first action would be to approve the first reading for the text amendment. And then once that is approved, then we would need to open a public hearing and have a motion on the transmittal. And then once that goes up to the state, we're looking to have a second and final reading on ordinance 1514 on October 19th to finalize the process. So what we're looking for first is a motion on ordinance 1514 and then a public hearing and an ordinance on the resolution.
Thank you for the clarification, Mr. Karpis. Are there members of the public who wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, council members, are there any questions for Mr. Hudson or Mr. Chambers?
To risk sounding dense, what does this do?
Really, I think it just codifies some of the issues within your comprehensive plan. In actual fact, I think it does very little because most of these actions have already been covered by other mechanisms. As I mentioned, the procedures manual, your land development code. There's also standing court cases that address private property rights. So, but it is a requirement of the legislature. And our hands are somewhat tied by the language that needs to be included. Otherwise, if we don't move forward, there's the ramification of affecting other plan amendments in the future that are coming down the pipeline.
I'm always somewhat suspect of when the legislature does something in favor of the local community's home rule. I'm not sure this impacts that at all, but I have, I... How will this be affected when somebody comes forward with a project that they want to do? Does this make you go through another set of steps? I'm not understanding what the mechanism that this creates within your realm.
Yeah, I mean, basically, it just makes us more cognizant that we need to address those issues that were in the policy that I noted and take those into account when we bring recommendations to you, myself, or your planning staff, or your engineering staff. Because it has ramifications with a wide range of decisions that the city takes. What's that?
We weren't before.
You were. And that's why I'm saying that the impacts of this are negligible. But it's something that the legislature feels is necessary for us to review. I feel very confident that all the jurisdictions in Hillsborough County were very cognizant of this. I don't know if there were other jurisdictions elsewhere in the state that maybe were not quite as sophisticated and were making decisions outside of public hearings without seeking input from the community, things of that nature. But for the jurisdictions in Hillsborough County and Temple Terrace in particular, I think the, what you see from the day-to-day activities of your staff is not going to change all that much. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Donahue.
This is like signing an agreement that we agree that motherhood is a good thing. Okay, I mean, is this tied in any way to that home-based business bill that went through last year?
Not to my knowledge.
It sure reads like it. Okay, I mean, that, why would we say no to this? This is, we've always done, we, property rights are a big, and here I can tell you, it's, as you know, you've been here. And we've been like, nah, it's not going to fly here. That would affect property rights of the next, the guy behind them. So, I mean, I'll do with the process whatever you have to do. But I don't think this is a support of home rule in any way, shape, or form. This is telling us behave, which we're already doing, you know, so, sorry, just had to ask that question.
Are there other questions?
Interesting thing, I'll be presenting this on Monday night to the Plant City Commission, the following Thursday to Tampa City Council, and October to the Board of County Commissioners. And I'm sure I'm going to get that same question. Hopefully by the fourth time around, I'll have a more succinct response. But I think that, again, it's, you know, the legislation is intended, the legislation was intended by, to cover the whole state. Maybe there are some issues that I'm aware of further field, but for our jurisdictions in Hillsborough County, I think the ramifications are minor.
Thank you.
Other questions from Mr. Hudson or staff? Okay, now I'll close the public hearing and ask the clerk to read the title of the ordinance.
In ordinance of the city of Temple Terrace, Florida, amending the text of Imagine 2040, Temple Terrace Comprehensive Plan by Creating a Property Rights Element in accordance with the adoption of House Bill 59 by the Florida House of Representatives, Providing Severability and Effective Date and Repailing All Ordinances or Parts of Ordinances in Conflict Towith.
Good. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 1514?
Move to approve.
For first reading ordinance 1514.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no nays. Ordinance 1514 is approved on first reading, will appear for a second reading and public hearing on Tuesday, October 5th, 2021.
I'm sorry, 19th.
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, it's 19th.
Okay, I'm just reading. I didn't make it up. Okay, just to clarify for everybody, this ordinance will appear for a second reading and public hearing on Tuesday, October 19th, 2021. October 19th, 2021. Next item on the agenda is related to this. It's a public hearing for a resolution authorizing a transmittal of a proposed comprehensive plan amendment, CPA 21-02, adding a property rights element to the Imagine 2040 Temple Terrace Comprehensive Plan to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity and other state reviewing agencies. I will open the public hearing. Mr. Hudson, executive planner from the Hillsborough County City/County Planning Commission will explain. And you kind of already did, but...
I will say that my presentation that I gave a moment ago for the previous item stands for this one as well. And I still stand for any questions you may have. And I think your planning staff might be able to elaborate a little bit more on...
So just for a point of clarification, anytime we amend this, it has to go to the state agencies for their blessing and approval?
Anytime you make a textual change to your comprehensive plan, that is in an adopted portion, which this is, goals, objectives, and policies are adopted. And only can be modified, changed, or added, in this case, by action by the city council. So, and that requires us to send that up to the Department of Economic Opportunity.
Very good. Mr. Karpis?
That was it. That we read the ordinance. Now we need to send it up to the state.
And get their blessing, and then we could have the second reading and final adoption.
Very good. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, council member, any questions for staff or Mr. Hudson? If not, I will close the public hearing. Ask the clerk. No. Give me a second. Close the public hearing. If acceptable, is there a motion to adopt the resolution approving transmittal of plan amendments to the D, E, O, and other state reviewing agencies?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no nays. The resolution is adopted. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is a resolution approving the annual renewal of public safety radio maintenance agreement. Newly promoted police captain, Chris Mills, will explain. Welcome and congratulations again, Captain.
Appreciate it. Good evening, Mayor, council members. Captain Chris Mills, Police Department. The selection of Communications International as our vendor of choice for equipment, maintenance, and support is in keeping with the previously approved parameters of the Police Department's 2013 800 megahertz radio migration project whereby city council authorized the use of Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office, RFP 26-10 for the purposes of implementation, phase build-out, and ongoing maintenance of the newly acquired equipment. On January 25th, 2021, HCSO executed an extension of its contract with Communications International written pursuant to Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office, RFP 15-20. In accordance with the aforementioned contract extension of HCSO RFP 15-20 and upon the approval of city council, Communications International will continue to serve as a designated vendor for the maintenance and support for the city's public safety radio system. The annual renewal cost for the 12-month term beginning October 1st, 2021 is $59,000. The annual renewal cost for the 12-month term beginning October 1st, 2021 is $59,697. Funding for this expense is included in the fiscal year 2021 annual budget. The expense will be paid from the Police Department Radio Maintenance Account, 001-1411-521.4615. It is recommended that city council adopt a resolution approving the renewal of the public safety, excuse me, public safety radio maintenance agreement with Communications International. The agreement will be effective for a period of 12 months beginning October 1st, 2021, and ending September 30th, 2022. With that said, I'll stand for questions.
Thank you, Captain. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, council member, questions for Captain Mills? Seeing none, very good. Is there a motion to approve the annual renewal of Public Safety Radio Maintenance Agreement?
Move to approve.
Council member Vice Mayor Donahue made a motion, is there a second? And a second, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No nays, resolution is adopted, thank you, Captain. Next item on the agenda is a resolution supporting the extension of the ninth cent fuel tax, pennies for potholes. City manager Stevenson will explain.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since 1980, Hillsborough County has leveled the ninth cent fuel, uh, ninth cent fuel tax, more commonly known as pennies for potholes. It's authorized by Section 336.021 of Florida statute. Revenue from the fuel tax has been used exclusively for the maintenance of roads, streets, and bridges, and there is a continuing need, obviously, for that to continue. The current levy of the ninth cent fuel tax is scheduled to expire at the end of this year, December 31st of 2021. Florida statute now authorizes Hillsborough County to extend this levy through the enactment of an ordinance. At their August 18th, 2021 meeting, B.O.C.C. adopted an ordinance that extended the levy of the ninth cent fuel tax until December 31st of 2031. Before you this evening is a resolution that supports the extension of that ninth cent fuel tax imposed pursuant to the Florida statutes and approving an extension of the interlocal agreement between the county and the city so that the ninth cent fuel tax proceeds get distributed to the city, as they always have done until December 31st of 2031. So before you is a resolution supporting the extension of that interlocal agreement with the county that we will execute and send them back a copy of and get our portion of those proceeds.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, council member, questions for Mr. Stevenson? Okay, is there a motion to support the extension of the ninth cent fuel tax?
I move to approve and support the extension of the ninth cent fuel tax.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, is there discussion on the motion? I do have a little explanation for the public that may not because it was requested, and there may be other people that don't quite understand. So this tax is a county tax that's been in place since 1980 that was due to sunset. This, the county has extended the tax. This, we're not being asked to vote on that, the county has done that. What we're being asked to do is enter into a memorandum of understanding, which we have had, but it is also due to expire. If we don't enter into memorandums of understanding over these things, the amount that we get, our portion, is calculated by statute. Typically speaking, these memorandums of understanding that we have with the county provide us with a higher calculation than is required by the minimum that's required by statute. So by doing this, we get a bigger slice of the pie. If we don't do it, we still get a slice of the pie, but it's calculated by statute, and that calculation gives us a much smaller slice. So really, what we're being asked for here, I don't want people to be confused, we're not raising your taxes. The county has not raised your taxes either, they've just kept it in place, and that tax would happen whether we voted on this tonight or not. So just so everybody's clear, this is a county tax, and we're voting now to enter into an MOU with the county that will give us a bigger slice of the pie than we would get otherwise. Okay? Okay, very good. Any other discussion on the motion? Very good, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No nays, resolution is adopted, thank you, Mr. Stevenson. Next item is a second public hearing and second reading of ordinance 1512, adopting the fiscal year 2122 tax levy. I'll open the public hearing on both the tax levy and the budget. We have back-to-back public hearings here. Finance Director Lynn Boswell will explain.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of city council. In accordance with applicable provisions of the city charter and the Florida statutes, the cities, the city council scheduled two public hearings, this is, this being the second, on the property tax mileage levy. The first hearing was held on September 7th, 2021. The city council solicited public comment on the proposed property tax mileage levy. At the first hearing, the city council approved by unanimous vote a tentative property tax mileage rate of 6.5550 per thousand dollars of assessed value, the same as the current and previous fiscal year. The tentative property tax mileage rate of 6.5550 is .3985 mils, or 6.47 percent higher than the rolled-back rate of 6.1565. The rolled-back rate, that is the tax rate that would generate the same amount of property tax revenues as approved for the prior year. Property tax revenues are calculated using the mileage rate and the county appraiser's most recent assessed property values. Because our tax base increased in value for this upcoming year, our rolled-back rate is less than the prior-year rate. If the tax base were to decrease, the rolled-back rate would be higher than the prior-year rate. The council should take action to approve ordinance 1512, to approve the ad valorem tax rate for the upcoming fiscal year. The rate of 6.5550 requires at least two-thirds vote of council to approve adoption per the maximum mileage levy calculation established by the state of Florida. The city must adopt the mileage rate and budget by separate votes at this hearing. The mileage rate must be adopted before the adoption of the fiscal year 2122 budget.
Thank you, Ms. Boswell. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, council member, questions? Any questions? If not, Mr. Schuster, was that satisfactory, the explanation of the rolled-back rate? You're good?
I think that explains...
No other clarification? Okay, very good.
To the public that that's what that means.
Good, I just wanted to make sure you were satisfied with that.
Thank you.
City clerk, would you please read the title of ordinance 1512?
In ordinance of the city of Temple Terrace, Florida, adopting a mileage rate of 6.5550 mils for fiscal year 2021 through 2022, said mileage rate being 0.3985 mils, or 6.47 percent more than the rolled-back rate of 6.1565 mils, providing a severability clause and providing an effective date.
Good, thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there an ordinance to, or is there a motion to adopt ordinance 1512?
I move to...
Second.
Motion and a second, is there discussion of the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, we need a roll call vote, I caught myself, sorry. Scratch that, we need a roll call vote, council member Abel?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye. The ordinance is adopted on second reading. Next is a public hearing and second reading of ordinance 1513, to adopt the fiscal year 2122 annual budget. Finance Director Lynn Boswell will be back to explain.
Good evening, Mayor, members of city council. In accordance with applicable provisions of the city charter and the Florida statutes, the second of two public hearings has been scheduled for this evening, Tuesday, September 21st, at 6:00 p.m., to solicit public comment on the annual budget for the upcoming 2021-2022 fiscal year. Notification of the public hearing was initially provided to all property owners in the truth and mileage trim notices provided by the property appraiser's office in mid-August. The recommended budget was presented to the city council in a series of budget workshops to review and solicit adjustments to the allocations of the budget documents. The total city fiscal year 2021-2022 budget amounts to $79,559,496. A budget summary document is attached illustrating the total budget for the upcoming fiscal year. The proposed 2021-2022 budget reflects the following: no increase in the ad valorem tax rate to 6.555 mils from current year of 6.5550 mils; a 4.1% increase in commercial sanitation rates; 4.1% increase in single-family residential sanitation rates; 3.4% in water, sewer, and irrigation rates; 496,505 in general fund capital programs; 1,281,722 in community investment tax fund expenditures, to include replacing public safety vehicles and equipment; building improvements for fire stations 1 and 2; pulling outdoor court at the family complex and a museum for the library; 6,383,500 in needed utility system improvements, replacements, and vehicle replacement; 300,000 to purchase commercial sanitation trucking containers; and 2,328,000 in street sidewalk, bicycle, trail, and drainage improvements. In accordance with applicable provisions of the city charter and the Florida statutes, the city council has scheduled the second of two public hearings on the fiscal year 2021-2022 annual budget. After the city council solicits public comment on the proposed annual budget, the council should approve the attached ordinance adopting the proposed budget.
Good, thank you. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, council members, questions? Are there any questions?
I have a question about the ordinance.
Vice Mayor.
I've asked this before, but I, I don't think I've gotten an answer that I liked.
Well, let's see what we can do.
All right, go down to about midway. Authorizing the city manager or the finance director to transfer monies among the departments and programs within any fund. Now, we've gone over this budget with a fine-tooth comb, please tell me what this means so that I know that if I said I want you to purchase X, it's, I just, I just need to hear, what does this really mean in your day-to-day?
Since we start the budget so early, there may be some adjustments, perhaps from personnel, perhaps from operating costs that we may not know about. We keep the appropriation exactly the same, which is we do not change the appropriation that has to come through the council all the time. We may change, maybe a department didn't need as many things as they did, but we do have a department that does. We have this discussion, and we go ahead and move those into that other department. It doesn't mean that we're taking anything away. It works the same way also in the enterprise, and definitely works when we get down to audit time. In audit time, we determine, oh, this actually doesn't go here, this actually was meant to be here, this line item wasn't that, it was actually supposed to be this, or it was a different department that did this, not that one, and we go ahead and do it only within the actual funds. We do not interchange funds. Again, that has to come before the council in order to do so.
Thank you.
Is that the answer you're...
It is the answer, and I, you know, I'm not in the finance department. I do understand that we have been very specific, very specific, on how we spend all of this $79 million, and I just want to make sure that that is still in place, and her answer tells me that if they make any changes, they'd have to come to us anyway, so.
Okay, so you did get the answer that...
I did, yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that...
I had to, you know, work it through my...
Okay, no, I just wanted to run it to ground.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
I'm uncomfortable, so, okay, other council member questions? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing, ask the clerk to read the title of ordinance 1513.
In ordinance of the city of Temple Terrace, Florida, adopting the final operating budget for fiscal year beginning October 1, 2021, and ending September 30th, 2022, and the capital improvement budget, given notice to the public hearings thereon, authorizing the city manager to issue such instructions as are necessary to achieve and accomplish the service programs, authorizing the city manager or the finance director to transfer monies among departments and programs within any fund, authorizing the city manager or the finance director upon receipt of a donation or grant to appropriate sent funds in the expenditure line item of the program as requested by the donor-grantor, providing a severability clause, effective date, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 1513?
I move to approve ordinance 1513 upon second reading.
Second motion and a second, is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we need a roll call vote, I'll start now, council member Abel?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye, the ordinance is adopted unanimously, and that's a second reading, so we won't do that again. Do we, until next year? Right, it's amazing how quickly you can go through $80 million and even more.
Yeah.
So, council member, council business, there's a carryover business to be dealt with from previous meetings or previous issues. If not, I have something, we need to, and I think this is probably where it fits, we as a body need to discuss the raises, or whether to give raises to the three charter officers, and if so, how much, and we can also, I think would be appropriate, if the council chooses to have discussion of their evaluations, if there are comments or discussion that you would like to have, we don't have to, it's up to you, but we do have to decide what we're going to do for the three charter officers in terms of pay. So I do need a motion from somebody at some point, if you want to have discussion first, that's fine, so I'll just kind of open that up. Is there discussion on any of this? Council member Abel?
I have a question, could I have a little bit of context about what's been done in previous years?
Sure, that's a good question, and that's probably a good idea for the public, too, thank you. We have several groups of employees at the city, they're not all the same, they don't mix. We have, our fire department are unionized, and their raises and steps are set forth in their contract. Our police department is unionized, and the same thing applies to them, their raises and so forth are set. Then we have the big, well, I don't know, those two groups are pretty big, but then we have the rest of the employees that are what we call general employees, all the other departments. Those are the people that when we set the budget, we talk about whether to give them what raises to give them, and then we have a very small group of the three charter officers, which are the city manager, the city clerk, and the city attorney. We have to, each year, separate from everybody else, we've got to talk about what to do for them. Since 2016, when I first got on the council, to my recollection, we have always given them the same amount that we've given the general employees, which in this case would be 4%. There's nothing in the charter or rules that says we have to do that, but that's commonly been our practice. Again, that's not established anywhere, that's just what we've typically done.
So, follow-up question, is since the budget has already been approved, how does that work with raises if we talk about...
That money is typically baked into the budget in anticipation that we're going to give them something. We've never given, well, I don't say never, never since I'm aware of, we've never given them more. So, correct me if I'm wrong, but typically, when you calculate the budget, whatever the general employees get, whatever it would cost to give the three charter officers is calculated in there, too. And if we give less, then we save some of that money, and if we give more, we got to take it from legal or somewhere, I don't know.
Okay, thank you for that.
You're welcome. Yes, I'm sorry, council member Schuster?
Yeah, I, I just got back in town, so I didn't have a chance to do anything with this, but what are the contracts called for?
The contract calls for us to have this discussion.
Every year, it's...
Yeah, it doesn't, it says that we can give pay adjustments.
That's fine, that's fine.
Yeah.
Oh, I move to, to keep the discussion going.
Hold on, hold on, let me make sure there's nobody wants to have a discussion. Is there discussion on devaluations? Are we good, we ready for a motion? No, go ahead, I'm sorry.
My move that we, under the basic established practices that we've done for the last several years, include our charter employees with the standard raise that's baked into the budget for all employees that are covered under that.
Just to clarify, that'd be 4%.
4%, okay.
Okay, very good. We have a motion to... We have a motion, do we have a second?
I second that motion.
Motion, and we have a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No nays? Congratulations.
I would, I would like to ask a question.
Sure, we voted.
We did vote. This is about next year.
Oh, okay.
This is about next year.
Okay.
I don't know, I, I, I know how to play this game.
Okay.
If we wanted to give them pay raise more than four percent, our hands are pretty tight, because joking aside, we'll take it out of somebody else's pocket, but I think we need to do this much earlier, so that we can get to the budget line and say, you know, I think you've done an exemplary job, and I think you deserve a five percent raise. Unless we say to the one or the other two, okay, you only get three because she gets five, whatever, I, I don't think that's the way you want to do it. So I would like for this exercise to happen as we're starting the budget process, so that we can actually, you know, we, we've, we've got employees that we're, a lot of us are writing exemplary behavior here, and we're really happy to have them working for us, and yet we can't really give them any more than what we just baked into the budget. So it's just a comment, I don't have to make a decision, but I, I'd like to be, to be thinking about it earlier in the, in the budget process.
Got a comment on your comment, because last year, you asked me to do it now.
Before the budget.
You did, you asked me to do it now last year, because I, we, and you were right.
Well, in the past, you're right, we did it way after, which made no sense at all.
You made a good point, but now I did it when you asked me to do it, and you asked me to change the timing again.
No, I'm just asking you to move it earlier. I, I was happy that it came before this, but it just, again, it brings to mind that we, we can't really give them more than we've just voted on.
I don't know that that's true, though. Yes, we could.
Yeah?
Yeah, we could, because, well, let me tell you why. It's an eighty-million-dollar budget, and we run a pretty tight ship, but nobody drops the last penny on September thirtieth on an eighty-million-dollar budget, okay? When we calculate a four percent raise for all two hundred or whatever general employees we have, that's assuming a hundred percent billoting. We never have a hundred percent billoting. We have vacancies in some, I mean, all the time, you always have vacancies. So we very seldom drop all of our salary budget, so there's, like, if, if you had an exemplary employee, we have, we do have exemplary employees, and we wanted to go above and go five or six percent, we have the room to do that. Now, if you, we're going to go crazy and start going ten percent or something, then we're going to run into trouble, but you're talking about individual people. These numbers don't get real big until you start talking about groups of employees. If you're talking about giving one a bigger chunk, we could do that.
I do appreciate that it was much earlier than it had been in the past. In the past, it was, I mean, everything had been approved, and there was no going back, so, yeah, thank you. I appreciate it.
Tried to get this done before this discussion, so we would all have the benefit of looking at each other's. Which brings me to another question, since we're on the topic, and we can't talk offline. If there's, or, or, you folks, I haven't gotten any feedback, I'm assuming that the way we're doing these evaluations is acceptable?
Yeah, much better.
Is this okay with everybody? You don't like it, so?
I don't have a better alternative, okay? Personally, I like the numerics that we had in prior years, but I liked, I'd like it, we could blend the two. I, I'm not, I, I, last year's, to me, was more definitive, you could get more detailed and granular. This year was a little higher level, which isn't bad, but I'd like, you had three options. Doesn't mean exceptions, I mean, doesn't mean expectation, meets expectations, or exceeds expectations. Well, in order to exceed, exceed expectations, you could have lunch with God two or three times a week, in many, in many cases. So I think that if we could come up, and, and it was, it's good, it was effective, it was more specific to the jobs this year, which I thought was a lot easier, but, you know, it was, I don't know that we're there yet, and I, but I don't have a better idea for it at this point in time. I need to go back and, I want to reread what was done, and, and maybe I'm looking at it wrong, it could be me, I'm, that's why I'm saying I don't have a better alternative at this point.
Okay, well, part of the problem we had with the numerics, and maybe there's a better way to do the numerics, was that, for instance, it was one through ten, and five was acceptable. Five was, the employee that meets all the standards was a five, they'd be five, right down the line. If they met all the standards, everything was acceptable, they'd be five. And at the end, it gave them a fifty out of a hundred, and they all grumbled. I got a fifty out of a hundred, I got a fifty, and it was, yeah, fifty was the benchmark. I mean, if you got a hundred, you're walking on water, you, nobody gets a hundred, right? But we were giving people, you know, eighties and nineties, because we're like, ooh, fifty doesn't sound good. And so, you know, the numbers got, to me, didn't mean anything.
Oh, I agree, I agree. I mean, you can't keep, you can't give everybody all ones, because then they're, they, they can't.
Yeah, they get a four.
Yeah, exactly, I mean, that, that's ridiculous, too. So I agree with you, I, I don't have a better alternative.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, there's, I'm, I'm just thinking of a?
Well, I am open, I, and I have looked at, you know, I mean, we're not the only ones in this boat. The county structure is very similar, they have county commissioners and a county administrator, I mean, the airport, the Plant City, they, you know, we're not, the school board, I looked at their system. What we did this year is pretty consistent with what the others do. I mean, you know, keep in mind that the charter officers are executive-level people, so you don't get down to, you know, how long you're taken for lunch. I mean, it's not, you know, so it is, does tend to be a little higher, so. But I am certainly open next year, just let me, give me some time, it's like trying to get this to you, so.
Thank you.
New business? I'm sorry, any other council business, carryover? Very good. Any new business and board reports?
I have, I have one comment.
Councilmember Schisler?
One comment, thank you. Terrace Community Middle School was awarded their third National Blue Ribbon Award today by the Department of Education. It's not necessarily located within Temple Terrace yet, but Temple Terrace residents do go there, their citizens do go there, kids go there, and I don't think anybody else in Hillsborough County's even received a National Blue Ribbon in the last twenty-five years, but TCMS, and that's their third time to get it. So congratulations to them, and to the students and the faculty there. That's all I have.
Madam Clerk, could you get the information on that and draft a letter for my signature to send over to congratulate them?
Thank you.
So, other new business, Councilmember Abel?
I serve on the Affordable Housing Board, and the county passed something called the Tenant's Bill of Rights ordinance back in March, and I'd just like to tell you a little bit about it. They voted and passed the Tenant Bill of Rights, the Source of Income Anti-Discrimination and Notice of Late Fee Ordinance, and this ordinance was enacted to provide additional protections to resident, residential tenants in unincorporated Hillsborough County, including protection from income discrimination, and, as a result, are provided more affordable housing opportunities and offered more protection for homelessness. And the, the Hillsborough County webpage has all the information about this, about enforcement, and it went into effect on July first, 2021. And the county has reached out to City of Tampa, us, as well as Plant City, and their objective is, they, they would like for this to be county-wide. And I have a handout, if I, if I may, can I hand it out to you all? Actually, can I have one more to give, too? Sorry. And what it does is it outlines the rights that tenants have to know the law, along with some phone numbers, that people can call if they need assistance, and some guidelines that's all in accordance with state law. On the back, it has resources for tenants, as well as a, an agreement that's supposed, that, that landlords are supposed to give their tenants to make sure that they've notified them of this information. So I wanted to, to relay this information to you all, give you a chance to look it over, think about it, and if we could, I drafted a resolution or something in order to get on board with this, I would like for you to be able to consider that.
So, Councilmember Abel, have you, do you, have you read a copy of the ordinance itself? This is, this kind of explains it, but have you read the county ordinance itself, the raw, the actual document?
Not all the details, no.
Okay. Because we would, we would want to get that to have our legal review, because we want to make sure that there's nothing in it that conflicts with any of our ordinances, because we have some rental ordinances also. We'd also, I'm just popping into my mind, is I'm interested to know how this ordinance goes beyond the landlord-tenant rights already established in state statute. I'm assuming this must go beyond that somehow, but in what way? So, yes, I mean, I, I'm, I'm saying, we just would need to read this, if somehow we can get the county attorney to send that to the city attorney, we obviously need input from staff on that, too, and, but, yeah.
I agree with you that we need more information, to make sure we have a thorough understanding and that it doesn't conflict with anything.
Sure.
I'll have the, the county attorney who's responsible for this.
Okay.
Reach out, and hopefully.
Or maybe you can get it from Christine back over there, or somebody?
Yes, and I did reach out to Tampa about this. Their staff was, at the time I talked to them, and it's been a couple, a few weeks whenever Councilman Abel first mentioned this to me, their staff was still reviewing it and, and trying to determine what to do.
Yeah, Plant City, too. Plant City hasn't acted on it either. I don't know what the status is there, but I know it's not come up to their commission either yet, so I don't, I don't know what the status is.
Thank you for bringing this.
Yes, Councilmember Schisler?
Mrs. Schump, question on that. If the state passes a law that covers the whole state, then we have, then we, we all have to follow the law, essentially, right? I'm being very, very thirty-thousand-foot level. So then if the state, if the, if the county passes a law that covers our county, then we have to either create our own ordinance or live under their ordinance, maybe? My problem, my concern is, I, I, we'd be careful we don't create our own bureaucracy within ourselves, do we have to monitor, we have to, we have to litigate, we have, whatever, whatever it takes, so that we have to, to do the enforcement on. And if the county has one, because they, they are the dog that wags the tail in many, in many respects, if the county has an ordinance, do we want to, do we want to, do we want to start messing around with something similar to it, or just endorse what they've got? I guess is my question. Without having to, I don't want to, I don't want to create our own rental board or whatever, I don't know what you could call it, you know, what, because that, that's just going to add people and services that we have to provide at our level, when the county's already covering it. And I'm not sure if the county has that authority to do that.
Things that the county has passed or adopted could, at times, pertain to all of Temple Terrace as well. It depends on whether we have something that addresses the same situation, or whether we don't have something. It, it appears, and, and I don't know what the, I don't know what the, the county's ordinance or resolution said, so I don't know what it's even requiring with regard to this. It appears that it is telling landlords and other lessors to provide the, this notice of rights to, here it says tenants applicants for a tenancy. It said if there's no application, then it should get, be given to the tenant at the time of occupancy or prior to the time of occupancy, and it requires that the tenant, obviously from looking at this, that the landlord has to get the tenant to sign it, and then it says that the landlord should retain it. I think that at this point, the landlord would mostly be in violation if they did not provide this notice to the tenants, and they better keep a copy of this to prove that they did. So I do know that City of St. Petersburg, a number of years ago, had something similar. It was a list of rights, and they passed something requiring that all landlords provide their notice of rights at the time that the property is being leased. So, and that, that seemed to be the only requirement. I don't know what the county's requirement is yet. I will get that, I'll try to get it all tomorrow from the county, and, and, so that I can see exactly what it entails. I don't think that they, I'm doubting that the county would be giving extra rights over and above the state statutes to any tenants. I think this is just advising tenants, hey, there is a state statute, you do have these rights, and it looks on this, it tells them where they can call in case they're having a problem, including Bay Area Legal Services, to whom I've referred people who have found their way to my office and called me when they were having issues with landlords. You know, they think if they call the city attorney, I can help them, but I, I generally refer them to Bay Area Legal Services, so.
I think, I'm not positive, I haven't not read the ordinance, but I have had a conversation with some county officials over this. I think where this differs and goes beyond state law primarily is in the income discrimination part, and, and it mandates landlords not be allowed to consider where the people are deriving their ability to pay rent. So in other words, you can't turn somebody down because they're on a certain type of income or government assistance or something. I think my, if I understood the conversation correctly, that's where this goes beyond Chapter eighty-three of statute. But we'll find out. I mean, that's, that, but I think your point is good, we need to know what we're getting into. I mean, is this a symbolic thing, or is this something that requires a bureaucracy, you know, some kind of a, we don't know. Or maybe you know, I don't know.
I, I don't know all the details.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, we need to find out.
I agree.
We need to find out.
When you look at the resources, they're all things that we would always defer to the county or the state, so it's not something that we would have to create.
Well.
An office.
Not necessarily.
Well, when you look at the list, though.
Well, these are referred.
About the clerk or the court, and, yeah.
If the landlord were to violate the, this within the City of Temple Terrace, it's quite possible that we would be responsible.
That's my concern, yeah.
If somebody made a complaint that, you know, John Doe discriminated against me because I'm on Section Eight or whatever, it is quite possible that we would have to do something. We don't know that the county is going to just step into Temple Terrace and do that. It's a good question.
It's a good question. I, I will tell you that Section Eight is not something that you, somebody says, okay, we're going to give you this money, now go find an apartment.
Maybe it was a bad example.
Yeah, so.
If somebody alleges a violation of this.
Yeah, but.
Who does the enforcement?
You know what? If we don't look into this, we won't know. So all we're wanting you to do is come back to us and tell us where we stand. We may already have something that we could easily say we agree.
Yeah, we need to find out. Councilmember Abel?
I did ask that question about what would Temple Terrace as a community have to do.
Good, what'd they say?
They assured me that, no, we wouldn't have to do anything. It's just they want consistency across jurisdictions, but I'm not going to say I sat there and read it all, because I didn't. But I do think we need to do the research and make sure we know all the.
I absolutely agree. Yeah, we need to look and see what we're, yeah. Good, thank you. Other new business or board reports? Anything else? I don't think I have anything. This is, I don't want to go on too long with this. The, I wasn't going to bring this up, but the issue of the electric vehicle charging stations came up earlier, and I said, well, I want to have another conversation. Just to be clear, this issue, this whole discussion started with Councilmember Abel, I'm not jumping on her. This, this is, she gets the credit for starting this conversation, not me. Months ago, and I'm not doing a gotcha here, you're not prepared for this, this is, goes back to April, so I'm just asking you to look into something. I've been reluctant to do this with all the budget and everything going on. Back in April, one of the things that Mr. Polly came, he did a little research based on Councilmember Abel's request to say, can we get some EV charging stations here? What's that involved? And in his roll-up that we got back, one of the options seemed like a pretty good one, and I can't remember. and I can't remember the name of the company now, but it's a private company. They do it all. They, all you got to do is give them space. They come in, they put the charging stations there, they take care of the transactions, they do the credit card. But we don't do anything, we just need to give them space. And I think they pay us a little bit for the use of the spaces. Could we get Greg or somebody to follow up on that? I mean, we, we would only be doing it at the city facilities. But it's cost neutral. In fact, it may be cost beneficial. We might get a little bit of revenue out of it, and it would provide a service and an amenity for our community that we don't have, and it wouldn't cost us anything. I'm not interested personally in getting real tangled up and getting in the middle of this, but this sounded like a one-stop deal, right?
And to that end, one of the other suggestions in that packet from Mr. Polly, it said there was a grant program, I believe it was through TECO, where they're trying to install these stations. Well, I signed up to get the notifications about that, and then we just got the notification that that grant program is going to be opening very soon, if it hasn't already. So, there's that option as well that's coming out.
So, I mean, obviously, it's not the biggest burning fire, but if we could.
We can have him give you an update. He's actually been working pretty diligently on that and has made some progress.
Oh, good.
So, we haven't really made any progress with the one here, but we certainly have made it some of our facility, city facilities, as well as the redevelopment area. He's talking to TECO and to private firms about doing this. So, let me get him to kind of give you an update. He knows all the details of that, but just to reassure you, he's been working on it and has made some progress. So, we'll get a, we'll get a presentation from him next meeting.
Good, thank you.
Actually, the 19th.
Good. Thank you. Other new business, seeing none, city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple, couple notes to make with council. We've got National Night Out coming up. I know Mr. Brown, Patrick Brown is here. Patrick, you want to come up? And National Night Out is scheduled to be a drive-through event as well. Patrick will kind of give you some details here.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
Council members, how are you? So, yes, we are having National Night Out, once again, at Mission Hill Church this year on October 5th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. This year, it will be a drive-through event, meaning that, kind of like how the senior center will have done their, their senior expo this, this year and last. Ours will be a little bit longer, and we're also going to have a majority of the vendors that we had last year, or, excuse me, two years ago, since we actually had to cancel last year's event, joining us again, and some new vendors as well. We are still going to have a SWAT team static display. We're going to have a static display of our marine unit. The fire department will be joining us here, and also the, every other city department, the library, parks and rec, and also the Chamber of Commerce for the city or the area. We're, we're also going to have our new command post up there as well. Basically, what is going to happen that evening, starting at 6:00, we're going to have an officer posted out on Serena Drive, or Serena, and they're going to, they're going to direct vehicles in onto 54th Street and through the back of the church. There's a, there's a lot that goes all the way through to Mission Hill Drive, and then vehicles will be directed out there, and they will get to enjoy what we have to offer, not just the police department and the other city departments, but as well as our vendors.
So.
You're so good.
They drive by and look out the window at the SWAT vehicles and?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We, I've, I've worked with our vendors. They're allowed to pass things out, they're allowed to pass that out. They're not allowed to prepare food at the event or anything like that and pass that out, but they are allowed to prepare it in their store, have it covered, and then pass it out that way. I know Smoothie King will be doing samples that way. We're also working with Starbucks, they're going to be coming out as well. And then Hippo Ice Cream, actually, will be bringing one of their trucks to, to sell ice cream at as well. And they're, that's all prepackaged stuff. I'm not sure what Starbucks has decided to do yet, since they are a national partner for National Night Out. It was, it was more than adequate to invite them.
Councilmember, question?
Thank you for.
Very good, thank you, Patrick. Thanks for coming in to.
My pleasure.
Give us the explanation.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Y'all, good night.
You, too, thank you.
That's your police department adapting.
Yeah.
Whatever we can do. It's kind of an odd concept. We do it with Senior Expo, which is coming up this Friday from 9:00 to noon over at Lightfoot, Omar Lightfoot Center. Drive through, see what you think. They do, they do a pretty good job, really. It's an odd way of holding an expo, but they do, they do a pretty good job.
It worked very nice last year. It was very nice last year.
Yeah, and I think they've made some improvements. They've got some new sponsors, so it's a good event. Drive through, it's, it's, it's worth it. I'm still trying to figure out what drive-through bingo is. I don't know. That doesn't register in my head, but I may just drive through myself just to play drive-through bingo.
Yep.
But anyway, Expo, Senior Expo, this Friday. Ms. Tumbleton mentioned the redistricting, redistricting that the county is going through. I will, I gave you a kind of an article that kind of laid some things out here. It's certainly something worth paying attention to and providing some input.
Charles, have you seen, I know they had started with three or four different maps, and they threw a couple of them out, and they have one. Have you seen the one that remains?
I have not. I have not.
Has anybody seen the one that?
I, I don't, I've asked if that map exists, and they tell me that it's forthcoming. Now, I have not seen it, so I will try tomorrow to maybe track it down, because I know they have some, they have three, four, five meetings set up around the, around the county. So, I will share that email with you that I got today about where those events are being held, all, all four or five of them. So, I'll try to get hold of the map.
I wonder if Bonnie could give us a copy of the map that remains on the table.
I will track it down, okay? And I guess, again, to bring up the evaluations, I appreciate the raise. Each of you gave me very high marks on my evaluation, and I do appreciate it. So, we've done some good things over the past year. We continue to do some good things, and we've got a bunch of things in the pike that make things even better this coming year. So, appreciate the work on the budget. The directors now have a job next year, and I'm sure that everybody is comfortable with that. And again, we've got a lot of good stuff coming down the pike, so thanks for passing the budget. I know that it was a little delayed this year, and we got a little tangled up with some vacation time from council, but we'll certainly try to, to get this done a little bit sooner next year, maybe before everybody heads out on vacations, so. That's it, thank you, sir.
You know, while we're talking about budget, I, I said this a long time ago, and I kind of quit saying it because we just moved on, but at the county, when we did a two-year budget, the second year still has to be passed, because you can't really do a two-year budget. You still have to pass the budget each year. But year two is simple. I mean, you just take it off the shelf, you kind of dust it off, you change the numbers a little bit. It, year one's a pain, because you're doing two years at a time, but then the second year, and that keeps staff from doing budget for seven months every year, just nonstop budget. And it also gives you the ability to do projects that are two-year. You know, you say, okay, well, we'll fund half of it this year and half of it next year, or, you know, whatever. It gives you the ability to kind of dice up the projects and phase them. I'm not telling you guys how to do your budget, but I, when we first went to it at the county, it was a real pain in the neck, and it, it didn't take long for us to see the value of this. It was much better. And so, I don't know if that's something maybe, I, I know there's work to do on this process. I know you guys are going to be huddled up trying to figure out how to do this better. I just want you to keep that in the back of your mind when you're thinking about stuff.
We'll have some discussion about it.
Okay.
One other thing, Mr. Mayor. I had given you a memorandum here some, a couple of meetings ago. I cannot remember how the conversation came up, but there's a memorandum here of outstanding development applications, rezonings, and site plans that have never gotten started. You guys had requested that list. There are six projects that got rezoned and no construction, and three site plans that got approved with no construction. So, there are timelines involved with this. You may have to revisit some of these per our code in the near future with somebody coming in and wanting to now start a project. But just information, someone had asked for that information, and again, we're just trying to provide that to you to give you an idea.
Vice Mayor Donahue.
So, we have one here that was approved in 2018, and it changed a piece of property. And since nothing has happened, that piece of property is changed forever? Or can someone, or could they sell that property as its original? So, it went from residential to commercial?
You're talking about the rezoning?
Yes, I'm talking about the first one.
Rezoning will go with the sale of property.
Pardon?
I mean, if you rezone a piece of property, then I sell it to you two years from now? That rezoning stays in place.
That's my point. And so, we encroached into a neighborhood, and nothing has happened, so that piece of property is forever changed. Is there anything we can do to undo that if nothing is going to happen and turn it back into residential?
I don't know the, what the purpose of that would be.
For the neighbors?
Well, you can't.
The neighbors were very unhappy, if you recall, that we.
I don't know.
Allowed that to happen.
I don't know, I, I don't know that you can just arbitrarily pull back a rezoning, a rezoning. So, I, I think you'd probably get yourself in some legal issues with that. The legal, the rezoning will run with the property regardless of time or ownership, so.
And I, I knew the answer. I was just saying, it, it seems that since it's now been changed to something that very few people, except one person, wanted, and now nothing's happened, you know?
I don't believe there's anything we can do, so.
Okay, so somebody could buy it and turn it and ask for it to be rezoned, residential, right?
They can rezone it back.
They could do that, okay. All right. And we would all happily say yes.
Well, it would have to go through the, the processing.
This council voted to rezone it.
Yes, they did, and there's, I don't want to get into, there was some, there was a lot that was lacking in that, what we knew, what we were told, what we listened to. And so, now to know that it's been changed, and based on what the person was planning on doing and all that other stuff, it all sounded, you know, plausible. But now, since nothing's happened, it just, I just wondered, what a shame, you know, that, that this is a permanent change to something. Now, what do we do with these? This is a, this was rezoned, and now nothing's happening. What, are we like?
I don't know.
Nothing? There's nothing we can do about?
What would you like to do with them? I, I'm not sure I understand your question.
I don't know, I guess I would like to say, get busy.
Well, I, you know, again.
Do what you said you were going to do.
The previous zoning, the previous zoning on the property, there was nothing ever done on the property. And again, we don't have any, we don't have any skin in the game to do anything with a, with a rezoning, unless somebody makes application to rezone a piece of property. So, I'm not quite sure what we would do with forcing somebody to go back to an old zoning.
Remember that whole discussion we had about an hour ago about the property rights and why would anybody want to do that?
Yes.
Well.
Well, yeah, and that, that new element, if I can kind of interject, that doesn't really pertain to Hillsborough County. You may have had somebody way up in Marianna that had an issue that you now have a representative that is pushing a bill through. We take a lot of pride in respecting people's property rights and working with people here in the City of Temple Terrace to develop property.
But then the next one says that we gave them a year to come into compliance, and they haven't done it. So, what is our recourse on this? Number three, I'm sorry, not number, number three. It says, per the rezoning, they had one year to bring some items to compliance, like buffers, landscaping, lighting, and signs, and no work has been commenced.
Well, I understand that all the rezonings that you have here in front of you, any development that, that pursues with, any kind of development that is consistent with that rezoning would now have to come before council. Those items that are listed, landscaping, lighting, signs, are all dealt with at, at site plan, anyway. So, when somebody comes in to build something that is consistent with the existing zoning that's on the property, those items would be incorporated into site plan review. The council gets to approve and review, anyway.
Yeah, but Charles, she's right, though. This document says, per the rezoning, they had one year to bring some item in. So, what's the, if it's per the rezoning, what's the point in us putting conditions of approval within the?
I, I don't know that that was accurate to put conditions on it.
It was, that was the old Almer, Almer's Auto property. And there were conditions on the annexing in.
On Fowler Avenue, okay.
That's right.
There were, and nothing's happened there.
Yeah. It's being used for the purpose that they wanted it to be used for without all these things.
What are the consequences if they don't adhere to the conditions of approval? Sounds like it's a code violation.
That'd be something.
I'm not so as conditions of rezoning, but conditions to be annexed in, they had to meet our codes of signage and landscaping.
Either way, what's the, what's the consequences of failing to meet the conditions of approval?
As far as the rezoning?
Before it's illegal.
No, as far as code.
We, we'll, we'll have to, we'll have to get back with you on that. Good question.
Okay.
Kind of odd that we would put those stipulations.
I remember them, though.
I do, too.
They were there.
I do, too, yeah.
But I, I do, I do recall that conversation.
Yeah. The stipulations were, when they came in, that they had to meet our business codes for buffering and signage and everything, because they weren't in the city, and now they are. So, it wasn't a condition of rezoning, but a condition of being in our city.
We can, we'll force them to do drive-through bingo and make them sit through that.
Well, it's a, it's a good question, though.
It is a good question, and I don't know.
And I, and I think Mr. Chambers is right. I think it was a condition of annexation.
Yes.
And rezoning was kind of part and parcel of the annexation.
Let me visit that with Mrs. Schuster.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good, good question.
I think it's a code thing.
Vice Mayor, were you, any other?
Yeah, yeah, I think, no, the rest of them say nothing has commenced, and so, they thought they were going to do a project, and they haven't done it, maybe. Who knows why? I, I understand that. But those two seemed especially puzzling. Thank you for answering.
Mr. Stevenson, anything else?
No, sir.
Okay. City Attorney's report.
First, thank you very much for the raise. And what I wanted to do tonight is to let the city know that we have a new intern in the legal department for the fall semester. Her name is Halima Nofel, and she is a third-year law student at Thomas Cooley Law School. She is here tonight, sitting through our council meeting, and I didn't know if she wanted to say something or answer any questions, but she's here, so.
Welcome.
Turning up wanting to talk, come on.
She's now decided she's going into engineering.
That's it.
Very good. Councilmember, any, council members, any other comments? Anything else to come before this council? Directors, citizens, anything? Are we good? Everything's good? Okay, we're adjourned, then, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good point, Steel, good point.
I did, I'm going to go. It's, it's Saturday, right?